Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, September 18th, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Council President, Colonel.
Present.
Council President Pro Tim Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Banks?
Present.
Councilmember Brightwell?
Here.
Councilmember Cruz? Councilmember Fraser?
Here.
Councilmember Ho?
Here.
We have a call.
May you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have communications. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes. Our first speaker is Stacy Jackson.
Stacy Jackson, Southfield resident. I am here tonight to express my concerns about the city's efforts of taking away the right to vote for the residents, for a city clerk and a treasurer. During our last meeting, or the last meeting that I attended, my husband came to the podium outraged by what had happened in Florida. And unfortunately during that outrage, the message of unity that he had intended to spread was lost in translation or in the weeds. I'm here tonight to say that I understand when one of the city council people indicated that she was offended. Well, I asked today, how offended do you think I am, being the first of my family, born with the uninaliable right to vote, without the opportunity of being threatened or hanged? My parents are from that generation, where it was dangerous and life-threatening just to say you wanted to vote. And so that legacy that they extended to me is my pledge and oath to fight for, not only for presidential elections, but every election. I also have to understand or ask, why now? When we have a sitting councilperson who has the legacy of being elected term after term, election after election, for one of those same seats? There were many times that that person even ran unopposed. Why did we not appoint a city clerk then? I want this council to be cautious of the optics. The optics appear that when African Americans potentially apply or run for office for these positions, that there is somehow something wrong with that. I think you should leave things the way they are. The people have the right to vote, to elect these positions. And to change this now, at this time, in this moment, gives the illusion of unconscious bias. Please know that at the forefront of all of this is the audacity of hypocrisy. How can all of you ask the voters to come to the polls to vote for you, and yet, at the same time, ask us to vote not to elect a city clerk or a treasurer? Be mindful and cautious of your actions. Optics matter. For those of you who are of shared dissent, you know the atrocities of the right to vote that our people struggle through. For those of you who do not share that, please know that it is the ultimate disrespect if you do vote for this.
Thank you. Keith Harris?
My name is Keith Harris. As usual, she put it perfectly. But, you know, I'm a fighter. I'm a fighter. I fight every day for the rights of everyone. I don't discriminate. Like I said, my shirts say, "All race and life matter." And we spell "race" differently. It means real activism serves everyone. Now, these past couple of weeks, I've been going throughout Oakland County, talking about this exact issue. I've been getting calls from all over the country based on this issue. But not only that, dear, I've been going out throughout Oakland County, talking about the $37 million theft. Why do the Oakland County taxpayers have to pay that money back, when the theft actually happened here in Southfield? Everybody agreed that there should be a federal investigation on what's going on here in Southfield. I really just can't understand. We believe the reason you want to have a selection is to keep covering up the crimes of this city. The day is over with. The people are going to have to keep paying for other people to benefit, using your seats to get rich on. And people are suffering. I witnessed a lady die because she was stressed out over connecting to the city. She kept saying she couldn't afford it. This city has done things that I just can't, just can't understand. But, you know, as usual, I write these papers, and I hear back from reporters, I hear back from, like I said, people all over the country, and everybody is surprised at this city council. Everybody. And I'm telling you, if this passes, the city will have no rest. I will make sure of that. It will have no rest. And still, we won't rest until we have a federal audit from the FBI and the Housing Department to come in. We're pushing for that. We can't trust Dana Nessel. She's untrustworthy. And, like I said before, we see criminal action, and we see cover-up, we see exactly what this city is trying to do in having a selection. We have a few selected people up here today, but we don't know how they got there. They didn't come from the most current elections. But what we're saying is, the people, we're going to fight. I'm going to leave this message for you.
Next is Herman Gunther.
I hate to say this, but I'm the former president of Cranbrook Village Homeowners Association. So, our association is having a meet and greet, we like to call Sid and Donuts, at Rock Creek and, yeah, Fall River Road and Greenspruce. We named it called it Mailbox Island, because at one time, there was a mailbox on that island. It's going to be held October 8th, and I'd like to extend an invitation for all of you to attend. And since it's close to election, I'm sure some of you would like to meet some of our residents that will attend there. So, thank you very much.
What is the address?
It starts at 1:00. I better mention that first.
Mr. Gunther, what was the address again, please? I'm sorry.
It's called Mailbox Island. It's on the, between Rock Creek, Fall River, and Greenspruce. The triangle right there.
Next, we have Alma Sharon.
My name is Alma Shannon. I'm at 21755 Beach Road. And I'll piggyback off the voting right. I love my voting right. I fought for my mother, grandmother and all fought for us to vote, so we need to vote, please. I appreciate it. And I want to find out some information about the propane. Why are they taking the propaines from the stores? That's convenient for us in the neighborhood. And propane?
Yes, talk to the microphone.
Yeah, I want to find out some information about the propane that they're taking from the stores, like up at Dollar Village and close by, because a lot of us use it for cooking. So can I get some information on that, please?
Just, are you talking, like, the barbecue propane tanks, or smaller?
They've got the smaller tanks.
We'll have our building officials in the back, and he can, he can address your concern afterwards.
Okay. Then I see, I noticed that they're still measuring off to put up, they're still going to do the pathway on the beach. I see the flags where they're measuring out, so I'm gathering that we still going to go for the splash pad, or not for the splash pad?
There will not be a splash pad at Beachwoods.
Okay, so they're still going to widen the waterway, right?
There is some construction that is being done on Beach, but it has not been finalized and has not come before the council yet.
Okay. Well, that's about it. Thank you.
Next is Joseph Person.
Good evening, President, Mayor, City Council, folks in Southfield. I'm the chair of the Southfield Lethery Village Democratic Club. We're not a ragtag group that's been put out by certain members about in the community. We are a political action committee. And most of you up there know, we've even, though some of y'all, some of y'all have gotten elected because we went the extra, we did the extra work for you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the ballot, this is our kicker card we put out. It says, "Vote note, ballot proposal 1 and 2, Southfield Lethery Village Democratic Club. Don't lose your vote. Vote November 7, 2023, paid for by the Southfield Lethery Village Democratic Club. Vote note, ballot proposal 1 and 2. Southfield has proposed a referendum that would change the way we select our city clerk and treasurer, shifting from elected positions to appointed ones. Don't lose your vote. Don't lose your civil rights. Don't lose your representation. This is anti-democratic. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. We have a history of sound elections and have not had problems before. The system worked in Southfield. Our elections are still secure, and they will likely appoint an outsider. Do not take the right of the vote for city clerk or treasurer away from the Southfield voters, November 27, 2023. Questions? Email us at slvdemocrats@gmail.com, or y'all can email me at my personal email address, personjs@yahoo.com, or my telephone number, 248-470-3370. We have a right to fight for the rights that we believe. And as one of the only people in this room that have really fought for y'all right to stand up and do this, I just resent the fact that people want to put negative and nasties out there that we're doing things. When I came to the library event, I wasn't disrespectful to any of y'all. One of the city council members chose not to speak and walk away. That's fine. That is their right. I just think, at the end of the day, you guys are on the wrong side of history. And the other question that needs to be asked, you say you represent us, but nobody called the Southfield Lethery Village Democratic Club, and never mind the club, nobody called me as a resident, a taxpaying member of this city, and asked me about the right to take away the right to vote, and we'll pick a treasurer, we'll pick a city clerk. Thank you, and have a nice day.
Thank you. Next is Pamela Gerald.
I have a 40-year, or over 40-year history with this city. And I'm getting just sick and tired of every election, we've got a negative flyer against members of our council and administration. Now, the previous speaker that was up here was appointed, not voted for, to be chair of the Southfield Lethery Dem Club when Kelly Garrett left. The previous speaker was offered the chair position for the Oakland County Democratic Black Caucus. I was offered the position first, and I declined and said, "Get someone else." So he was appointed to that position also. He was appointed to the Oakland County Democratic Party Executive Committee, number three. He was appointed to the Democratic Party State Central, number four. So now, I want to ask, were the rights of the members of those organizations, and I was a member at that time, prior to me dropping out, if my civil rights were violated, if I lacked representation, and if my vote was even suppressed? Now, if you're all about the rights of the people, and I think we are, because citizens are at the top of the organizational chart, then why don't you rescind all of your appointments, and do the right thing, and have an election? This Trump-style messaging has got to stop. We know that sometimes, in some arenas, there is unequal equity based on race. But what I am not going to allow, in my city, that I have been paying taxes in for over 40 years, and I am a homeowner in this city, and I also own another home, it's no secret, you don't have to do an investigation, to race-bait, and this is what's happening. Now, I'm going to be saying some other stuff moving forward for this election, and I'm just going to say to the people, remember, every election, we've seen that nasty flyer. Every election, it's been race-baiting. We are one of the few cities in Oakland County that still elect a treasurer and a clerk. We spent $90,000, so much for being frugal, to eliminate one person from that clerk's race, and it was only one thing on the ballot. And I'm going to close with that.
Alan Hitzke?
On July 10th, I emailed to the Department of Public Works, a detailed list of 60 homes out of 326 in the Green Trees North subdivision that need concrete street repairs. And I have a copy of that list with me. Most of those problems are rather minor. A few of them are rather major. I have spoken to DPW several times. Nothing has been done to address any of those problems, including several deep potholes in our streets. Construction season is coming to a close, and temporary repairs that have been done in the past have proven ineffective, so I hope that these problems can be addressed. Thank you.
Mr. Hitzke, which, which streets are you referring to?
Green Trees North is on the north end of Cranbrook Village, 13 Mile, and Evergreen.
I can speak to that. Your street is going to be repaired this fall. It's supposed to be milled and scraped. The council approved the contract on June 12th for this budget year, which started July 1st. And your Green Trees North and South are both supposed to be done this year. They're supposed to start probably with Friar Lane first. Don't have the order in front of me, but the, it's on the list, and hopefully it'll get done before cold weather. They're supposed to start next week, or, yeah, next week.
Thank you.
It's multi, they're doing multi-streets, but your street is on the list.
I'm not so worried about my street as I am about a 30-inch, 4-inch-deep pothole at one of the entrances.
I understand. And that's why, that's why the council voted in June for over $10.1 million in street repairs for this year.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan, can you take your tag off your campaign?
Please, please don't address anyone up on the dais. Thank you. All right. Next, we move into presentations, and the first presentation is a Joint Resolution on International Day of Peace.
Good evening.
As I have mentioned at our last two meetings, this Thursday at 5:00, the city will be observing the International Day of Peace. The program is scheduled for 5:00 outside at the peace polls, weather permitting. We will be presenting this resolution, which I'd like to read into the record this evening. This is a joint resolution, mayor and council, International Day of Peace, September 21st, 2023. Whereas the International Day of Peace, also known as World Peace Day, is observed annually on September 21st. This day is devoted to strengthening the ideals of peace within and among all nations and peoples. And whereas, in 2020, Southfield became the first city in the United States to participate in the Amigos de la Paz Sustainability Program for the May Peace Prevail on Earth International Foundation. This award recognizes communities, businesses, educational institutions, and individuals that support the United Nations' goals for sustainable development. The goals were set to transform the world and strengthen the ideals of peace. And whereas, the International Day of Peace 2023 theme is "Act Now," to inspire people to act for the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. Act Now is a call to action, recognizing the individual and collective responsibilities to foster peace. And whereas, the United Nations' call to act for peace is to fight inequality, drive action on climate change, and promote and protect human rights to cultivate a healthy planet, a just society, and a better economy, and a world working together. Whereas, to achieve this, we must act urgently to accelerate changes to improve our lives and communities. Whereas, in Southfield, we ask residents to visit the peace polls out in our front drive, installed in front of the municipal building in November 2020. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, the mayor, and, or we, the mayor and city council, city of Southfield County, building of the state of Michigan, do hereby proclaim September 21st as International Day of Peace in the city of Southfield. And we will present this again on Thursday, once you approve the resolution.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the joint resolution for International Day of Peace.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the joint resolution of the International Day of Peace for September 21st, 2023. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The second resolution, joint resolution this evening, is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 1st to 31st. As you know, this will mark the fourth annual Domestic Violence Awareness March that we will have on Sunday, or October 1st. Program starts at 11:00 in front of City Hall, and then we will walk to a neighborhood east of the municipal campus. So, in support of Domestic Violence Month, we have a resolution that I want to, will be presenting to the committee, that is made up of numerous organizations, and joining us in our attempt to build awareness of domestic violence. Whereas, the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence Awareness Month first started domestic violence awareness in March, or in the month of 1981, in March of 1981. And whereas, in 1984, the Violence Against Women Act was passed, this was led by former Senator, now President Joe Biden, and considered a landmark in the fight against domestic violence. And whereas, sadly, family trouble and domestic violence calls to Southfield 911 are a daily occurrence in our city, and have increased during the pandemic and beyond. And whereas, the city of Southfield Police and Fire Departments, 46th District Court, Haven, Oakland County, or the Oakland, Haven, Oakland County, excuse me, Southfield Domestic Violence Group, the Dr. Martin Luther King Test Force, and a host of others, will host the 2023 Walk to Bring Awareness to Domestic Violence on Sunday, October 1st, beginning at 11:00 AM. Whereas, it is obvious that more needs to be done to address domestic violence in Southfield than raising awareness of this societal problem. Drawing on the resources of the above-referenced organizations, the 46th District Court is creating seminars that will be ordered to offenders of domestic violence as part of their adjudication. The court will also hold seminars for victims of domestic violence by providing skills and assistance in escaping toxic relationships. And whereas, the Southfield Police Department will develop a domestic violence prevention response plan to identify private residences and that have multiple domestic violence-related calls. And what they're doing is tracking where there's repeated calls to a residence, and offer intervention with assistance of support services and counseling. And whereas, additionally, the Southfield Police Department will develop a high-risk response team consisting of multidisciplinary group to plan coordinated community response, including prevention. including prevention and community education. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council, City of Southfield, County Bulklund, State of Michigan, do declare October two thousand and twenty-three as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Southfield.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the approval of the joint resolution for Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilman Fraser, to approve the joint resolution for Domestic Violence Awareness Month for October of two thousand and twenty-three. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Again, I would urge all residents to come out. This is not a ticketed event. If you want to support this cause, again, eleven a.m., Sunday, October first. And we hope you'll stand up to protest or bring awareness to domestic violence. Sadly, it is the number-one crime in our city. But it is, it's not a Southfield problem. It's a societal problem across the world. Then we have one more.
Thank you. We have one more presentation. I don't know if I want to read this one, but it's the retirement announcement of Connie Mays.
Connie and Chuck Woodward, our building official, come forward.
Good evening, Council, Madam Clerk, Mr. Mayor, Administration. As the building official agreeing with me, Ms. Connie Mays, who's announcing her retirement after twenty-five years of service to the community. Ms. Mays started her career as Secretary One in nineteen ninety-eight and has worked her way up to her current position as the Office Coordinator with the Building Department. On her way to achieving her current position, Ms. Mays earned her Associate's Degree through OCC and later her Bachelor's Degree through the University of Phoenix. She worked with the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Planning Commission, the Safety Committee, the Spirit Committee, and served in the Coast Guard Auxiliary. Ms. Mays worked through many crises, like the market crash, COVID, changes in reorganizations within the Building Department, as well as administrative changes within the city government, all while she was dealing with the demands and pressures of being a single mom in her personal life. Her son is now a decorated Army veteran. I come before you this evening with mixed emotions. First, I'm proud to have had the opportunity to work with Ms. Mays, who has a dedication and a career history rarely found in today's workforce. I am, however, happy for Ms. Mays. She will now have the chance to enjoy the fruits of her labor that she has so selflessly earned and that we all sometimes take for granted. I will be saddened by her absence. I will miss her unmistakable laughter, her compassion, her work efforts, and the morning greeting I've grown so accustomed to. Lastly, I would like to convey gratitude, not only for me, but from all of those in my department, all those who knew and appreciated her, and for those who came before me. Thank you, Ms. Mays. Thank you very much.
I've spent many, a day in the, going through the Building Department and always had a good word from Connie. Appreciate your service. We have a certificate honoring you for your twenty-five years of service.
I just appreciated the opportunity to work for the city. I've enjoyed it. It was not an easy decision to make. I will miss everybody, all the people. I've enjoyed it, and it's been a good career, so I want to thank everyone.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can I say something? Ms. Mays, come back to the podium.
Connie?
Yes.
I just want to wish you many years of good health and happiness in your retirement. We worked together for many, many years, and I know that you are going to enjoy retirement and enjoy doing the things that you've always wanted to do outdoors, but never had a chance to do it because you are working, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. Council, do any items need to be polled for further discussion? All right, we have item A, which is a maintenance contract for the Equiture Recording System. Item B, legal server subscription for the case management and MIDC compliance. And item C is to schedule a regular meeting conducted as a committee of a whole meeting for Thursday, October fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Councilwoman Hoag?
Mr. President, I move that we approve consent agenda items A, B, and C as previously stated.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve consent agenda items A, B, and C. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we're for our public hearings and site plan. First up is PSLU two-three dash zero-zero-one-zero, special use request of Tower Petroleum to allow for a carryout restaurant inside of an existing gas station convenience store located at two-zero-zero-two-zero West Eight Mile Road.
Thank you, Council President. This is a special use. It is also paired with the site plan, a site plan which is also for approval, but does not have a public hearing, since it's a site plan. Just a couple of items here. We've got a, this is a corner of Eight Mile and Evergreen. The zoning is B-three general business, and there's an existing gas station, convenience store on that location. They are looking to add a carryout restaurant, renovating the interior, doing a few minor site improvements as requested. You can see a closer-up aerial photo of the site, existing gas station, some photos of the property as it sits today. It is zone B-three general business, and the future land use is commercial office, which is consistent with that zoning. Got the site plan here. The actual carryout is going to be inside. There aren't facade changes proposed, a couple of site improvements, one being the sidewalk you see coming off of Evergreen and going over to the gas station, along with the bike parking there along it, and then striping out the area between the pumps and the gas station interior to try to discourage people from blocking that aisle, and then a key walk and that would go from the bus stop in toward the gas station for people who are at the bus stop who wanted to patronize, patronize the gas station convenience store. But this would have previously had to walk through landscaping that would be in that area. Landscape plan, most of these plantings are existing. Some of them may need some refreshing as part of the plan here. We'll be doing that as part of the final inspection of the project, just ensuring they've got all this cleaned up. This is the floor plan. You can see the existing layout. The far right is the, the hatched area is where the carryout, small carryout is going, it's roughly two-hundred-and-ninety-eight square feet. Some elevations, once again, pretty much existing conditions. And then we do have the petitioner and their architect here. If there are any questions?
Would you like to come up and give your name and address for the record, and then add anything that you wish?
Good evening. My name is Ken Moreland. I'm with Dorch and Martin and Associates, two-nine-eight-nine-five Greenfield Road in Southfield. I am the architect for Mr. Fawaz, the owner of the facility, and I think Mr. Paison has pretty much summed up everything that needed to be discussed. Again, we're not changing the facade at all. The space is already there, and we're just going to be providing the necessary equipment and stuff inside, and then for Mr. Fawaz to have a carryout restaurant. So with that said, I would open up any questions or comments, concerns you guys might have.
So we will address all questions after the public hearing. If you could have a seat, we'll open the public hearing, and then we'll bring you back up for any questions. Also, just for clarification, this was the carryout restaurant is going to be prepared food already available, it will not be cooked on the premises. Is that correct?
I believe that there will be a grill included with a hood, that they will have it prepared and ready for consumption as people order it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so this is a public hearing for PSLU two-three dash zero-zero-one-zero, for a special use request of Tower Petroleum to allow a carryout restaurant inside of an existing gas station convenience store. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box one-fifty-five, Southville, Michigan, four-eight-zero-three-seven-dash-zero-one-five-five. My telephone number is two-four-eight-three-four-six-zero-four-three-nine. I'm in total support of PSLU twenty-three dash zero-zero-one-zero for a special use request of Tower Petroleum. We have a lot of nice gas stations in the city of Southfield, and Danny's gas station, I think, is one of the exceptional ones. His gas station is very clean, it's well-lit, it's well-stocked. The inside of the gas station and the convenience store is very clean. Danny is a good corporate citizen, and he gives a darn about his customers, and you can tell by the money he has put in that gas station, from the landscaping to all of the beautiful lights. It's amazing. He's so concerned that at one point, there was a group of kids that came from Detroit, and they were crossing Eight Mile to his gas station and doing what these little kids call like a grab, and all of them grab something, and then they run out at the same time. And these kids were running across Eight Mile from his gas station, across Eight Mile, the median, and then on the Detroit side. And one particular day, I saw them do that. Danny was not concerned about the fact that they took something. He was concerned about the lives of these kids running across Eight Mile on two different sides, and he was worried about their personal safety. So if we want good businesses in the city, we need to look at what they do in the community, how they present their business, how they are to their customers, if they're providing good products to the customers, and I think he does all of that and above. And I want to encourage the city, right there on the front of his gas station where that island was that needed to be cut down because it was a problem, if you would ask Danny for his permission to put a nice concrete wall there that says, "Welcome to Southfield." His gas station and that location would be a great marker to say, "Welcome to Southfield." You have one across the street on the recycle business side, but it just has these green-treated poles and a sign that says, "Welcome to Southfield." No plants around the poles, the poles aren't planted, I mean, aren't painted, and I just really think that that would be a great marker for a welcome sign to the city. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak to this item? All right, you can come on up. Oh, I'm sorry, there's one more speaker behind you. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, hi, City Council. My name is Latonya Reed, and my address is two-nine-seven-four-four Rambling Road. I came here to speak to you guys today. I didn't think that I would get the opportunity to speak today, but to my surprise. I'm coming to speak to you today. The first matter was a situation that I had.
Let me, this is about, we're discussing the carryout restaurant right now.
Oh, I didn't know that was.
Did you have any comments about the carryout restaurant?
No, I, I think a lot of the business owners in the community are really nice and good people.
Okay. The, the time when we had communications, when we had all the speakers to come up?
Okay.
That was your opportunity to speak?
Okay.
But we can, let us get through the public hearings, and we can give you another opportunity, if you, if you don't mind waiting a little while.
Okay, no problem.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this gas station proposal? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. If you want to step up, Council, do we have any other questions? Councilman Fraser?
This is a question to the planners. What is the determining use in this zone? Is it the restaurant or the gas station?
It actually has to be approved for both uses, so the special use for approval today would be the restaurant. The gas station, which is also a special use, is existing and had been previously approved. So it's to add the restaurant to the gas station C store. That's what's in front of you today for the special use approval.
Okay, the reason I ask that is I expect with this item, if it gets approved, gets approved, that there will be more and more gas stations that want to add to their C stores and make restaurants, restaurant use out of their gas stations, and as the cars use less fuel and more electricity, the restaurants will take the predominant use. We ran into a situation on Eleven Mile and Loser where we had dollar stores very close together, and my question to the planning department, are we prepared to look at what happens when we have too many restaurant uses too close together? I don't, you know, for years and years, we haven't had too many gas stations, but I can see a true restaurant in a building, in a gas station with a restaurant, another building with a, with a restaurant. Is there any plans to take a look at that or not?
Through the chair, we, we've been monitoring the number of gas stations and their locations. So these restaurants are, I believe this is going to be handled internally like a sandwich shop, but these, these types of restaurants are typically going to be like a Subway-type or coffee shop, and the reason they're special land use are, we have to look at traffic circulation and parking. So there's already that built-in protection as a special land use. If they don't make sense in a particular area, Council can not move forward with that. But just like you mentioned, if we have a proliferation in a certain area, we can bring that back to Council as far as creating greater separation or limiting the number. But at this time, it's just really based on the amount of space that each gas station owner has, similar to the liquor sales, they'll have to come in for special land use, and it's the traffic circulation and parking that we're, we're mostly concerned with, with these types of operations.
Okay, now, should we take a proactive position on this or a reactive position when we find out that they're actually too close and disappoint someone that's, you know, late coming to the game?
Well, I, I think throughout my tenure, we've been trying to take a proactive approach. We can look at our, our current inventory and also add that extra layer as far as those gas stations that are permitted to do takeout service, and we, we can bring that back at a future date to Council.
Okay, all right. I just don't want to see us in a kerfuffle with somebody that's late coming to the game and say, well- uh, late coming to the game and say, "Well, sorry, we got too many."
Right.
You can't do that.
Well, I agree.
But they should know I have a time.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Council, any other, any other questions, council? Okay. Terry? Or Tom?
Yes.
Um, do you want to read the recommended resolution?
Yes, we have a recommended resolution resolved that PSLU 23-0010, the special use request of Tower Petroleum to establish a gas station convenience store, carryout restaurant, on property located at 20020 West Eight Mile, City of Southfield, Oakland County, State of Michigan, Sidwell Parcel 24-34-479-023, be approved for the following reasons and conditions. One, the proposed use will be of such size and character that will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the general business district. Two, the location, size, intensity, and periods of operation are designed to eliminate any possible nuisance likely to emanate therefrom, which might be adverse to occupants of any other nearby permitted uses. Three, the proposed use is in accord with the spirit and purpose of this chapter and is not inconsistent with or contrary to the objectives sought to be accomplished by this chapter and principles of sound planning. Four, the proposed use is of such character and the vehicular traffic generated will not be, will not have an adverse effect or be detrimental to the surrounding land uses or the adjacent thoroughfares. Five, the proposed use is of such character and intensity and arranged on the site so as to eliminate any adverse effects resulting from the noise, dust, dirt, glare, odor, or fumes. Six, the proposed use will not be adverse to the promotion of health, safety, and welfare of the community. Seven, the proposed use is designed and operated so as to provide security and safety to the employees and the general public. Eight, the approval is based on the documents, facts, representations, and stipulations submitted with the application and placed on the record during the public hearing by the petitioner or their representatives. Nine, conditions. A, the first condition, approval of PSP 23-0012 by the city council. B, continuous compliance with all applicable ordinance codes, laws, and statutes. And the petitioner must perform all work under plans, permits, and final inspections approved by the city of Southfield. C, hours of operation. The gas station convenience store, 24 hours operation. Carryout restaurant, 11 a.m. to 8 p.m.
Alright, Councilwoman Hoag?
Mr. President, I move that we approve publicly, I'm sorry, site plan PSP.
P, uh, special use. PSLU.
I'm sorry?
PSLU.
PSLU 23-0010.
Support.
As read.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to approve PSLU 23-0010. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next, uh, we have is the site plan review for the same property. Does the city planner have anything additional to add?
We have no additional, uh, information to add.
Alright, council, do you have any additional questions? Councilwoman Hoag?
No question.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. President, I move that we approve.
Can you turn your mic on? Your mic is?
Mr. President, sorry, I move that we approve the site plan PSP 23-0012 as read.
Support.
Ooh, it was moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Frazier, to approve PSP 23-0012. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Councilwoman Brightwell?
Yeah, um, this is just an informational question. Several, several years ago, um, I was at the opening for a restaurant, uh, right at 12 Mile Telegraph. It was the opening. And, um, the following day, I was traveling, you know, through Berkeley.
Is your mic on?
It's on.
Yeah, it's on. Let me pull it closer. Is that better?
Better.
Okay, I think I have issue with my throat, so sometimes it will amplify. Um, I was traveling through Berkeley. Is Southfield, are we slow coming to, or are the applicants slow to coming to our service station? Coming into this C-store restaurant, uh, business?
My observations would say that because many of the, um, gas stations are of older development, they're smaller, so there's not a lot of room to do expansion. Uh, as I mentioned, the last time we talked about the liquor license, we only have two, uh, current gas stations that still do, um, automobile maintenance and repair. So many of them have eliminated the repair service and converted that to a C-store. As you've, council has recently seen, when we have new ground-up build for gas stations, they're much larger, um, to allow for the capacity of the C-store and takeout. So I think, um, the history of the city and the function of, of the land and the building size has limited some of this. But, uh, when we see new construction or major renovation, we are seeing larger sites and larger buildings with multiuses.
Oh, okay, okay. Alright, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, next we have the public hearing for zoning ordinance text amendment, PZTA 23-0003. And just like we did two weeks ago, if you don't mind taking them, I guess it's a public hearing. We'll do them all together this time. But hopefully we won't have as many questions. But at least we'll give the audience a chance to see what we're looking to change.
Uh, thank you, Council President. This is, uh, one, one total text amendment in terms of a motion, but there are sort of three topics and four sections which are touched. I'm just going to say that, kind of an introduction here, that the three topics are, um, clarifying that public art, for the public art requirement is permitted in front yards, required front yards. The second topic was adding heavy equipment sales and rental as a special use in the I-1 district. And article, the third was Article 22, which was looking at the increasing of the permitted maximum lot, lot coverage on single-family residential lots. And a footnote, just kind of tying into the public art in front yards, just to make sure it is fully covered. First item, which is the clarification that public art is permitted in required front yards. We are just adding a section to the end of the public arts requirement section. Basically just making a perfectly clear that public art approved per the requirements and procedures of the public art requirement and site plan review. So it'd be subject to those both and additional permitting, obviously. Whether the city planner and building official is actually permitted in front yards where public art could in fact be seen. So it was really kind of a, we had a, this proposal here, this piece, it's over at L T U right now, that's going to go in front of the Deer Run condominiums when they're nearing completion. And the architect at L T U who's working on this was looking at our ordinance and went, "Is this allowed in front yards?" And we went, "Uh-oh." We, uh, it's, it's a little unclear. It's implied, but it's not explicit. We probably ought to repair that. So really, it's just adding an item at the end of the public art requirement. Just making sure it's clear that like, if it is approved per the public art requirement, it will be allowed in front yards where it can be in fact seen by the public. The second item up was the discussion of the heavy equipment sales and rentals in the I-1 district as a special use. We had a business that was interested in coming to the city, McAllister Rent, Equipment Rental, looking at a site on Telegraph. They chose the I-1, which is our most intense industrial district. And we found that it didn't, their use didn't really match any of the uses in the code. We looked at various uses that were close, but not really close enough. We thought the way to correct that was to amend the code to add the use with some reasonable use restrictions similar to the ones we use for other heavier, like transportation-related, uh, industrial uses. I did, uh, in response to the council president's request, we did provide a map. The gray areas on this map, where they're grayed out, are all of the sites that are I-1 and three acres and larger that could potentially be used for this use with a special use approval. Many of these are actually occupied by currently operating businesses and might not be appropriate for some of the other site development standards. But it turned out to be 31 properties total in the Eight Mile and Telegraph industrial areas. Just so we would know the maximum possible extent. This is, uh, just a rendering of the plans under development, not the most current version, but one that they showed council when they came to talk about this idea a few months ago for McAllister Rental. They're in front of the Planning Commission this month, seeking their special, uh, their special land use approval, contingent on this ordinance passing. The next up was the maximum lot coverage for single-family homes. We are currently capped at 25 percent, but we're raising it to 30, uh, in this amendment. I did do some analysis here. We looked at neighboring communities and other communities in this region. They're typically running an average of around 35 percent. So 25 percent under our current code is a little low, though one of the things to note about our code is it only covers principal and accessory buildings. It does not cover accessory structures. So it would not include your pools or your decks or any of those sort of things. It really includes sheds, garages, and homes. So our ordinance is a little more generous in what that cap applies to, but it's still a pretty low cap. We were getting a lot of zoning amendments for people trying to do modest additions to existing homes. And this would have solved most of them over the last five years. We would have seen only one or two of these, and even those were close. So we thought this would be a good stepwise movement toward, uh, allowing, you know, modest modernization of existing housing stock and do infill homes in a more modern format. I did do a little bit of analysis here. This is just a typical 70 by 130, about a 9,000 square foot lot. This is the minimum lot size our code requires in most of the R districts. Just to give you an idea of what the current left, the current limit for footprint would be for a house that filled that whole 25 percent versus 30 percent on the right. You can do a two-story house in both cases, that's just the footprint. Just, just to give a sense of it. And the last piece of this is just a footnote being added to the schedule of regulations. Just tie barring the public art, just makes it clear that the front setback, there's a footnote for front setbacks that makes it clear public art per the Public Art Section 5.22-5 and Site Planner Review would be permitted in required front setbacks.
And through the chair, just wanted to add, can you go back one slide? Is that even though the maximum lot coverage is increasing, the setbacks haven't changed? So there still be protections on the front, rear, and side yard?
Alright, thank you. We will have a public hearing and then have council ask any additional questions. So this is a public hearing for PZTA 23-0003, zoning text amendments to Title V of the Zoning and Planning, Chapter 45, Zoning of the Code of City of Southfield. You saw what the changes were. If you have any comments, please come up. You have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I just wanted to be clear on Article 22, Section 5.193 to 5.195. Am I understanding accurately, bless you, and reading accurately that you are allowing public art in the yards of residents? And then the second question is for Article 4, Section 522-5, public art in the front yards, is that businesses or are we saying again, uh, single-family resident lots? And I know this quick statement that I'm going to make is not quite pertaining to this, but we know, and anybody that's on council know, that there is no campaigning inside of this auditorium and there's no campaigning at the dais. So I'm going to ask the people that are running for reelection, do not wear your reelection badges in the people's auditorium. And that would be greatly appreciated. But if you could just explain Article 4 and Article 22, I would totally be in support of PZTA 23-0003 for the zoning ordinance text amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item? Alright, the public hearing is closed.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Um, I'll try to address the public's question. So, uh, this is only for where public art is required. And that would be residential units of four or more that are at least a million dollars and greater. Commercial development that is a million dollars or greater, that's the public art requirement. With regards to residential, single-family, this doesn't apply. However, under the landscaping ordinance and code, um, individuals can place, um, a sculpture, a fountain, a figurine, up to three feet tall in the front yard that is not regulated by either our, our proposed amendments or, uh, consider it as an accessory structure. So individual, single-family owners, if they have a piece of sculpture, a fountain, or some other lands, decorative landscaping, three feet or less, they can do that by right. This only pertains to, um, those institutions for units or greater and commercial that exceed $1 million.
Okay, thank you. Council, Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, um, in that, uh, residential, public art is a setback measured from the public art or from the, the building?
Uh, again, the, um, front yard setback is measured from the property line or typically the right-of-way line of the street. Uh, again, for single-family, this, this doesn't apply. But if you had a multifamily development that's greater of a million dollars, uh, let's say typically the front yard setback may be 25 feet. This would allow, um, public art to, to come within that front yard setback. But it would still have to meet corner clearance, it'd still have to be approved by either the council or, um, by the planning department administratively and then the building department with regards to foundations and, and construction. So it's from the, it's the front yard setback from the, the front property line, which is typically the right-of-way line.
It's typically, pardon, excuse me?
It's the right, where the right-of-way line begins is the front yard. And then whatever zoning district has a setback, that's considered the front yard setback. So in many cases, it might be 25 feet. This would allow from, let's say, the sidewalk to 25 feet. Uh, typically, the sidewalk's one foot within the right-of-way line. So within that first 25 feet, uh, you could place a piece of public art as long as it didn't obstruct corner clearance or visibility and was constructed properly. The way it's currently written, they would have to meet the front yard setback, so they'd have to place it further than 25 feet. And in many cases, there's not either the room or, uh, it diminishes the, um, intent of having public art visible for the public.
Okay, uh, and the reason I ask the question is, it may be confusing with where you start measuring the setback. And if someone, uh, puts a piece of public, or a piece of art too close to the street, you know, and then the code enforcement or someone goes out and says, "You can't put it there," then they're upset and they'll be back here wondering, "Why is it written the way it is so that it's not very clear?" So it's better to have it clarified in the beginning than just try to fix it later on. So, is there any reason I ask the question?
Yeah, we agree.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks? Do you have a question?
No questions, thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have a question?
Yeah, I don't have a question, but I would, uh, I would move to approve this.
Go for it.
I, I move that we approve the council, council-initiated zoning ordinance text amendment, PZTA 23-0003 as presented.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve PZTA 23-0003 zoning text amendment. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Through the chair, uh, we request that you would introduce ordinance number 1776 at this time.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we introduce ordinance number 1776.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Frazier, to introduce ordinance number 1776. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The woman who, who we were going to allow to speak has left. Madam Clerk, were you able to get her name and address before we stopped her?
No.
Okay. Let's try to find a way to reach out to her. Okay, next we move into agenda items for discussion and our action. The first is Item A, receipt of proposals for the Dispatch Kitchen renovation project.
Good evening, Council. Director Meredith Morgan for this project. So the request here is to accept the proposal for the renovation of the Dispatch kitchen area. They do have a full kitchen area right outside of Dispatch that they can use to prepare meals. And the, we put this out to bid through the purchasing department. We received three companies that responded to our solicitation. They were evaluated by the police department and the purchasing department using criteria that included relevant experience and demonstrated ability, proposed plan and finishes, project timeline and approach, references, and price. The resulting rankings were Jenkins Construction in Detroit with a score of 97, price of $32,000 was the favorable recommendation. The total cost for this renovation with a 20% contingency fee is $38,400, and that is going to be paid for through funds in the Dispatch improvements committed fund balance in the general fund, and they'll be made available through a budget adjustment and a corresponding increase in the use of a designated fund balance account. And I'll answer any questions you have.
Counsel, any questions? Councilman Brightwell?
I'm pretty much for this, but I've heard that this is a 24-hour operation. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So will this be an industrial appliance kind of kitchen?
Well, we're using the existing appliances that we already have because they've been replaced not too long ago. We don't use, like the fire department, commercial-grade equipment because we just don't have as many people. So there aren't as many people using the equipment as you would say the fire department.
Okay, so this will be typical?
Typical residential-style appliances.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You like a motion, sir?
I have one question first.
Sure.
Will they, during the construction, will that disrupt the current operations? And what will they do for food during construction?
Well, we're looking at trying to time this with the construction of the Dispatch Center where they're going to be relocated so that everything kind of gets done at once while they're gone. If we cannot do that, there is another kitchen area in the building that the officers use, so they would be allowed to use that area.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
I move that we approve Item A, the receipt of the proposal for the Dispatch kitchen renovation.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve the receipt of proposals for the Dispatch kitchen renovation project as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, and your Item B, the Dispatch window replacement.
So we're also, we also requested quotes from companies to replace the windows in the Dispatch Center. There are windows on the inside, a hallway, and then outside windows in the building for the police department. We're speaking of the inside windows. These windows are very old. They have cracking in them due to the age of the windows, so we would like to replace them. They also swing open into the room, which takes up some of the space that we have, so we're, we're looking to not have them do that so that we can have the space back. We requested three quotes from various companies. Commercial Glass and Novi gave us a quote of $9,784. We are going to, again, add a 20% contingency for anything unforeseen for a total on this project of $11,741, again, coming from the Dispatch improvements committed fund balance of the general fund. The balance, the funds will be made available, again, through a budget adjustment in the building improvements account and a corresponding increase in the use of designated fund balance account.
Counsel, any questions? Councilman Frazier?
How many windows are we talking about?
It is four large windows that are in the hallway there outside of Dispatch.
Okay, and you say the windows swing in?
The two on the outside swing in, the two in the middle are stationary.
Okay, and what kind of replacement windows are you?
They're going to slide open as opposed to swing open.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the Dispatch room windows replacements as presented here tonight.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Fridge, to approve the Dispatch room replacement as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the early voting agreement with Oakland County.
Thank you, Your Honors. As you are well aware, council has, I'm sorry, the voters of the state of Michigan have overwhelmingly...
Thank you. The voters of the state of Michigan have overwhelmingly approved what was then proposal to, to fundamentally change election law in the state of Michigan. One of those things is to provide for what's typically known as early voting. And so earlier voting basically allows voters to vote over a period of time in the same manner that they have typically done on Election Day. So they can come into a polling place, they can fill out their ballot and make their selections, and then they can feed it into a tabulator, the same, again, as it would be done on a regular Election Day. The law provides that we will be, that it is mandatory that we provide early voting for federal and statewide elections. However, you can elect to do them on, for local elections. And that is my recommendation to council, that we be allowed to partner with Oakland County and Lathrop Village to provide early voting in the November election. We think it'll be a good start before the mandatory requirement that'll happen in February of next year, and we are asking your approval of the contract for that partnership.
Counsel, any questions? Yes, Councilman Banks?
Thank you. Just for anyone who's listening with reference to early voting, can you let us know what the start date of early voting will be and when the stop date will be?
Certainly. So I believe it's Saturday, October 28th is the first day for early voting, and the law requires nine days, but that does not include the Monday before Election Day. And so it will be going through to the, and I don't have a calendar in front of me, but that's, it will be going through that Sunday before the Tuesday election date. So that'll be the 5th of November.
November 5th.
Thank you.
And then what are the hours of early voting?
It'll be 8:30 to 4:30, except on Thursday, and Thursday it will be one late night is the intent, and so that will be noon till 8:00 PM.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? I did have two questions, I think. The first is, so that includes Sundays as well?
It includes Sundays and Saturdays, yep. It'll be nine consecutive days.
And then, when I was reading this, we're going to be opening, it'll be done here in the pavilion?
Yes.
And we'll have Lathrop Village coming to vote here as well?
Lathrop Village residents are partnering with us, and so we're going to provide the space for the residents to come and vote for their elected officials and issues.
Okay, so are they also sharing some of our staffing costs?
Yes.
And then, there was a reference to Waterford.
So in addition to, because we are doing this as a partnership with the county as well, in addition to the location that we'll have right here in the city, there will also be a location for all of the municipalities that have opted in. There are 45 of them in Oakland County. And so at the Waterford location, which everybody will get information on in there on our website, and we'll actually be sending information to their homes, so they'll have the addresses and all of those things. But they will be able, if you happen to be in Waterford and you're passing by and it's nine days before election, you can just swing in, and there'll be a location where all of the municipalities, cities, townships, and villages will be, you'll be able to vote there as well.
But not in Southfield? Southfield will have early voting for only Southfield residents?
Southfield and Lathrop Village.
And Lathrop Village, but Waterford has all 45 municipalities?
Including Southfield, yes.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Do we have a question?
No, I was going to move.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the early voting agreement with Oakland County as presented.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the early voting agreement with Oakland County as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have authorization to participate in a joint application for a 2023 Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods and a Neighborhood Access and Equity Program Planning Grant for 11 Mile Road.
Good evening again. The cities of Oak Park, Berkeley, Huntington Woods, Royal Oak, and Southfield would like to apply for a planning, design, development grant for 11 Mile Road between 696 and I-75 for a potential redesign to include better crosswalks, trees, green infrastructure, and bike lanes. This is only for planning and design engineering at this point. We've been working with our colleagues along this corridor. We feel that we can be much more competitive if we do it as a joint application. There is a 20% local match, which equates to about $5,200 based on our linear footage. I do have the funds available in our fiscal year 2324 Planning Department Budget Contractual Professional Services, and we're asking authorization to apply for this joint application. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Specifically, the city's portion is just east of where 11 Mile crosses 696 to Greenfield Road, and I know the city engineer is also available here if you have any specific questions of her. Two weeks ago, we came before council for a similar program grant for actual construction dollars on 9 Mile. This is for a planning and development grant, and communities are allowed to apply for these separate funding sources within, within the grant itself.
So Terry, so for example, the Hawk Light System, crossing system that was put in, those are some of the additional amenities that can be done?
Yeah, so that Hawk, the crossing was part of Safe Routes to School?
Yes.
Program, but we would be looking at that entire corridor for whether it's traditional crosswalks, mid-block crossing, or Hawk crossing, as well as adding bike lanes, possibly widening sidewalks to pathways, and anything that's going to help with non-motorized transit and to make it safer for both pedestrians and bicyclists along that corridor. What it might look like further down east in the other communities depends on their land use pattern, their right-of-way, and their commercial development. But if, if the traffic counts and crossings weren't, we would be looking at additional safe crossing for pedestrians.
Okay, so the other question I have is, where the yellow lines are, is that the extent of where it goes? And I only ask that because when you get over where 11 Mile crosses over 696, and I've mentioned this to our city engineer as well, the walls over an 11 Mile to 696 are very low, and there's missing railings, and, you know, the, just from a safety standpoint, can some of those dollars be used to help with safety?
Well, for this particular grant application, since it's due like next week, we're only, we're only focusing on this portion of 11 Mile, and it's for planning and design. We could, we could investigate whether or not they could look a little further west, but for the purposes of what we're asking for tonight, it's just from Greenfield to that crossover.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Councilman Brightwell?
Terry, just, it's estimated that our portion would be 26,000. Who has the largest portion of this? I know visually I could probably look at it, but I, I can't make that out.
Well, I'll, I'll ask the city engineer to jump in, but our portion is 5,200 out of the 26,000. I believe the 26,000 is for the entire length.
Okay, so who has the biggest portion of this?
Ms. Schultz, you happen to know? We, we believe that Royal Oak possibly has, Royal Oak possibly has the most linear foot in there, but we don't know off the top of our heads.
Okay, all right. Is this, you know, I know a little, very little about construction, but I know a lot about teamwork. Is this one of those cases where the big dog will control this, or each segment will be controlled by, by, by the home, by the home rule situation?
Yeah, this is just a planning and design study, so based on the study, we'd come up with cost estimates and what each particular community's recommendations would be, and then we may choose to do this on our own, or we may choose to submit for further grants later on. This is just planning and, this is funding to do the planning and engineering study to determine what is most feasible for each community. Then at a future date, if we're successful, we would come back to either apply jointly for funding to construct it, or we may choose to either opt out or to move forward on our own. So unlike the one on 9 Mile where we're asking for construction dollars, this is just the planning and engineering funding. And as Mr. Zorn and I have said, we're in an unprecedented period in time where there's a lot of money available for design, engineering, and construction, and that window is very narrow. That money is drying up. So we, again, this wasn't originally our focus. 9 Mile hasn't been our focus, but we, we saw an opportunity with our partner communities to leverage what they're doing, because we have a smaller portion compared to the other communities on getting some dollars to do this planning and design.
Okay, now I'm, I'm a big believer in, you know, striking what that iron is hot. Okay, thanks, thank you.
Yeah, this is just a, something just popped into my head, so it's not that I've been thinking about a long time, but when we develop these wider sidewalks and walking paths, we, I presume we expect the people to use them both day and night. Was there any consideration given during the design or the thought process of lighting these so that they will be safer at night? I know that lighting would probably be prohibitive and probably cost more than the paths themselves, but was there any consideration for lighting those?
Yes, we always consider lighting as one of the safety options. To your point, lighting is expensive. Our, our rule of thumb is first put an accessible pathway in, then layer it with pedestrian amenities and other things. then layer it with pedestrian amenities and other things to encourage use. And then, lastly, because lighting is more cost prohibitive, to try to find lighting sources. As you may recall, Ms. Hannah, from our department, we received a grant to do solar-powered, sensor-activated light bollards we're going to do as a demonstration program. I believe we're installing twenty of them along our pathway near Red Pole Park. If that is successful, those are much more cost-effective way of lighting our pathways, and we might be coming to council and working with our partner business organizations to install most of those. I believe we have a meeting coming up in the next week or two to actually stake those out. But whereas it's about $8,000 per just light pole, not including power source, and pedestrian lighting are typically anywhere from eighty feet or less, these bollards might be a more cost-effective way of providing lighting, be more sustainable because they're solar-powered, and they only, they only are activated when people are either walking or riding their bikes by them, so they brighten up in intensity. So that, that's, I'm very cautiously optimistic that that might be a positive way for us to light the paths that don't currently have enough street lighting or pedestrian lighting.
Good. Yeah, and it sounds like the type of lighting, the solar-powered, would not be on all the time. I mean, the bright part of it wouldn't be on all the time. And that would also, for those people that like to look at stars and stuff, it wouldn't have a lot of light pollution that would black out the stars and things.
Sure, and if you recall, we have the decorative lighting on Central Park Boulevard. A couple years ago, we went to LED lights that are solar-activated only when it gets dark enough, and they don't have a lot of light glare. And they've been much more cost-effective and reduced our energy costs by doing that. So there's a lot of products that are coming out nowadays. We were looking at underlighting at Eight Mile and Greenfield, and every year, newer technology is extending the life and more efficient lighting even from two or three years ago.
Okay, good. Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Counsel, any other questions? Okay. Councilwoman Hoag?
Mr. President, I move that we authorize the city of Southfield to participate in a joint application for 2023 Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods and Neighborhood Access and Equity Program Planning Grant for the planning and design of non-motorized improvements for Eleven Mile Road along with Oak Park, Berkeley, Huntington Woods, and Royal Oak.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilman Wrightwell, to approve the authorization to participate in a joint application seeking a 2023 Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods and Neighborhood Access and Equity Program Planning Grant for Eleven Mile Road. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have a presentation and discussion from K Group Developers for the Establishment of a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone.
Good evening. This item before you is for presentation and discussion. K Group Developers are seeking to build nine-site condos and thirty attached condominiums at Loser Road and Dunn-Scotus Street in order to facilitate the construction and make the cost viable for potential homebuyers. They're requesting we establish a neighborhood enterprise zone and approve applications for new facility NEZ certificates. Public Act 147 of 1992 for Neighborhood Enterprise Zones provides tax incentives for new developments or rehabilitation of residential housing in a qualified local government unit. Southfield is a qualified local government unit under the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act, and this NEZ meets the other requirements for parcel count and district coverage area. The city can designate areas as NEZ districts throughout, and once an NEZ district is established, certificates can be approved. Final approval of the certificates is done by the Department of Treasury. The NEZ program encourages owner-occupied housing and new investment in communities by reducing future property taxes for a period between six and fifteen years. Taxes are one of, if not the biggest concern of new homebuyers right now as they can be paying between two to three times their established neighborhood neighbors when they purchase a home. The land remains taxed on the ad valorem rule, and the building improvement pays taxes as a new facility determined on an annual basis by the Department of Treasury. City council must ultimately make a determination whether a proposed NEZ is consistent with the Economic Development Initiative's Master Plan, Neighborhood Preservation, and Other Development Goals of the city. The item is introductory, and if council's favorable, we would come back on October 10th to request public hearing for the district and certificate approval for the November 13th meeting. Representatives from K Group Developers are here to give a brief presentation and answer questions about the project.
Thank you. Good evening, counsel, and appreciate the opportunity to come before you with this request. My name is Aidan Calabat with K Group Developers. Business address for the record is 31333 Southfield Road, Suite 250 in Beverly Hills, Michigan. So we're here requesting the consideration of our proposed development at Loser, Nine Mile and Loser, just one block north of Nine Mile at Dunn-Scotus, to be classified as a neighborhood enterprise zone. Doing so will bring opportunity to this project and to this development that will help the residents and the homeowners of this development to establish themselves in this great community and develop, you know, not only for, that's catered to try and accommodate not only our aging community here in Southfield, but also to promote young, new families into choosing Southfield as a place of residence. As the assessor said, that one of the biggest challenges today with new homebuyers is that they face is rising mortgage expenses as well as taxes, property taxes. New homebuyers and new construction projects are uniquely burdened by their taxable value. They garnish a higher taxable rate than the established existing homes within that neighborhood. So in an infill project like this, where you're going in and building condos and single-family homes in a neighborhood that has a plethora of existing single-family homes as well as condominium units behind them, the, you know, the fact these new construction homes will kind of have a higher value, a higher cost, and the homeowners will have, you know, higher taxes assessed to those. So also with that, you know, as we're trying to reduce that for our, for our new homeowners, the NEZ zone, the NEZ application would allow the taxable incentives to be passed down to the actual occupants. These are not tax credits that the developer would be seeking or benefiting from. These are strictly for the occupants and the homeowners and residents of these units. So the property in question here is Loser Corner Condominium. We started this project in about, we had our site plan approved, I think. We began construction in 2021. We've got a total of thirty-nine units, which is a mix of thirty townhome attached condominium units and nine single-family homes along Dunn-Scotus. Next page, we see the, we've got eight buildings, townhome buildings, and then we've got the nine single-family homes. Currently, the first four homes are constructed and sold, and then we have permits issued on the next five single-family homes. We also have begun construction on the underground utilities and roadway construction for the townhomes, which should be wrapping up this fall, and we hope to start breaking ground on the building permits and townhome construction this fall as well, too. So during the course of the sales of these, as we started with the four single-family homes that we permitted, we identified a couple of challenges that we were facing with new homebuyers. So the first of which was to try and provide access to additional financing and funding for down payment costs, closing costs, and things like that. So we targeted a few items that we're pursuing to try and help on that front. One of them is the missing middle funds. We've also worked with, you know, partnering lenders who are promoting new construction within specific neighborhood districts. This neighborhood is one of those districts, so they're providing, you know, funding and availability to funds for closing costs and even towards down payments, too. So those are some of the ways that we're looking, challenging that, or attacking that challenge. The second challenge that we faced is really with, twofold with the aging population and their fiscal ability to maintain their taxes and things like that on new construction. A lot of these homeowner, a lot of these potential buyers are existing homeowners that are either in the city of Southfield, looking to either downsize or move to a home that has a first-floor master suite, or they're coming in and moving from other communities, you know, around the areas. And what we're finding is that there's a bit of a sticker shock when they start to see what the actual taxes are on these new construction homes. Part of that is due to the fact that they've owned their current home for quite a while, and the tax value of their current home, the taxes are a lot lower on the current home when they're buying a new one, especially that being new construction with the increased value and assessed value. It's adding, you know, their tax costs are going up significantly. So many of them are looking at that and wondering, how can we justify, you know, a new home, a new ranch home that's allowing us to stay within the community with such high tax rates? And some of the millage rates with some of the comparing cities are, you know, obviously not as high as the city of Southfield. So this is something that we're looking to try and target so that way there's a better competitive edge for homeowners to choose Southfield to buy their next home, especially these ones. So currently, we had the first four single-family homes that we constructed and sold, sold from a range between $407,000 to $464,000. The existing home sales are given there, within the one-mile radius, we're at about $70,000 to $295,000. So you see this stark difference in the market value, and these are, these are doing a comparative sales analysis between the new construction and the existing properties within Southfield. So that's why we feel that, you know, establishing this enterprise zone will allow these new construction homes to really be a little bit more competitive in the market and encourage buyers to go for those. We've also done a bit of a market analysis on some of these, and I'm not going to go through and rattle off all the facts that they're there, but you can see kind of what the estimated taxes are for the two homes that we, the two home models, single-family home models that we are proposing there, which are the ranch models and the first-floor masters. So there's significant, you know, tax values there. And we're just trying to be creative and inventive on ways that we can bring value to our homeowners and really make it, you know, facilitate these purchases. The designs are all kind of geared towards our aging community in Southfield. We've got first-floor en suites in just about all of the units. Our single-family homes are a mix of ranches and first-floor masters. And then, within the townhome condominiums, they are as well. We have, out of the thirty townhome condominium units that we have, only four of them, I believe, have, do not have a first-floor master bedroom and bathroom. So four out of the thirty are really geared towards that. And what we're finding is that pleasantly, we're finding actually a mix of the four homes that we did sell. They were not all kind of what we had originally anticipated, you know, kind of older retirees looking to downsize and try and find something that, you know, they can avoid going up and downstairs. We actually have some young families that have chosen some of the first-floor master options to start as new, you know, first homebuyers. So they're choosing the city of Southfield to really start their lives and their families in. And I expect to see a good mix within the townhomes of, you know, kind of older retirees looking to downsize, keep on the first floor, and new young families that are looking to come in and, either first home or first condo, you know, right after marriage, or when they're getting married, or when they're entering the workforce, and choosing Southfield as a place to grow their families. So I think that that mix is going to be very important to help the community to grow and not, and make sure that, you know, we're not just catering to one side, that we are encouraging, you know, population growth and more people to choose Southfield and raise their families in Southfield, because there are a lot of great reasons to do so. So we're here humbly requesting your consideration of this. We think, again, that it would bring great value to already a great project in a great location. Just as a sidebar, one of the public art requirements that was brought before you, which was the graphic shown, is actually the one that's proposed in front of this development. So I'm glad that the tax amendment was approved to allow that within the front yard setback because it will, as Terry mentioned, it will kind of serve the intent a lot better and make that public art piece more for the public as it's closer to the right-of-way. So again, we appreciate counsel for everything that you guys have done for us on this project, and we look forward to our continue working, to continue to work together.
Counsel? All right, Mr. Mayor?
I think you've made a great case. This is a concern of mine, and I know the council has the same concern. We need new housing, and yet, when the tax bill comes, because the cap has not been established, it really discourages homebuyers. So I think you've come up with, and I think you laid it out very, very well, the rationale. I would hope the council will support this as this is a tool, that it's state law, that we can employ here. I do hear, continue to hear, interest in your project. I also continue to hear from people who want to downsize or get something new that there's not a lot in Southfield. And, you know, we approved this project several years ago with the first-floor masters, and really, we're looking for housing that we can retain our older residents and hopefully turn over those four- or five-bedroom homes to families as the other, or older generation did when they purchased them. So I want a little clarification, though. Deerbrook, and then I see Loser Corner?
Mm-hmm.
So are you changing names, or is it two different?
Yeah, so just to clarify, we, when we developed the property, we had to split it a couple times through the Condominium Act. So the entire project, which consists of all thirty-nine units, both the thirty townhomes and the nine single-family, is contained under the Loser Corner Condominium Association. That establishes two units. Unit one is Deerbrook Condos, and unit two is the Dunn-Scotus Site Condominiums.
Say that again?
Unit one is the Deerbrook Condos, and then unit two is the Dunn-Scotus Site Condominiums.
Okay.
Which are the, so that splits it into the nine single-family homes, and then the Deerbrook is specifically the thirty attached condominium units.
Okay.
So we haven't changed any of the names, just, we're trying to encompass all thirty-nine of them as opposed to limiting.
Thank you for clarifying that, because I lumped the whole thing as Deerbrook.
Is Deer, yes.
It's Jamal's fault.
Again, I appreciate the support, Mayor Seiber. We couldn't agree more with everything that you said as well.
All right, Councilman Banks?
Thank you. I've driven through your project since you started building, and it is beautiful, but I do have a few questions and concerns. Do you have a visual of what the townhomes will look like? Because I was under the impression the entire site was going to be single-family, but I don't know if it was going to be single-family, like condo or detached condo. So what do the townhomes look like?
Yeah, so the townhomes are arranged in three-unit and four-unit attached buildings. They are technically single-family units still. They're just attached units, so you'll have three units to, or four units to a building.
So that top?
Yep, the top portion is the condos. There are eight buildings total, which make up the thirty units. But each unit has their own two-car garage, their own private entrance, driveway, pathway to their front porch. But each unit has their own two-car garage, their own private entrance, driveway, pathway to their front porch, and even, you know, back patios and porches as well.
So those will be developed, looking at the project, in the backyard of the, our two detached condo homes, and then the following lots? Like, there's one, two, three, so the middle in the back portion?
Yeah, so we have the single-family site condominiums along Dunn-Scotus, there are those nine homes there. Directly behind them will have the townhomes. And they, there's a road in the middle and townhome buildings on both sides of that.
Okay. Can you go back to the visual with the taxes? And if this program was approved, how does the homeowner benefit? Can you give an example, please?
Yeah. The homeowner would pay about thirty-five percent of the current millage, thirty-five point five percent. The land stays on the ad valorem rule, and we would continue to collect about twenty thousand dollars in city taxes on all the land.
Okay, so let me try it a different way. So the property tax is ten thousand dollars, is that with the discount or without the discount? That seems low, what?
That's without the discount. So like, a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home pays about close to eleven thousand a year in property taxes between.
Is that because it's a condo versus a single-family residential?
That's just, the tax rate is about three percent of the market value in the city.
Okay, so having said that, if this program was approved, what would the homeowner dollar-wise have to pay approximately, give or take?
They would be paying about thirty-five percent of that. So, and at the October tenth meeting, I'll have, you know, charts about how the taxes will be affected, but they would be paying total about...
Around three thousand?
About thirty-five hundred.
And that will be for either six to fifteen years, depending what we approve?
Correct.
And then what happens, okay, so let's just say, council approves it for six years, what happens at year seven?
Then it goes, it jumps back up and goes all back on the ad valorem rule.
So would it jump back up to the ten thousand one hundred and fifty-five, or jump up to whatever the SCV is seven years after the purchase?
It would jump up to whatever the cap value and taxable value is after the purchase.
Okay, and you said you, they have already sold four units, correct?
They have, and those ones wouldn't qualify.
I'm sorry?
Those units wouldn't qualify because they've already constructed those and sold them.
So those units will not be part of the program?
Correct. They would not qualify for a new facility NEZ certificate.
And then does a developer receive any incentive with reference to this program?
No, it's just marketing to the homeowner, and it's what their taxes would be based on.
And then will we be providing something, or will the developer provide something to educate the homeowner that after six years or seven years, whatever we approve, this is what your property taxes now, but in seven years, this is what it's going to be, so there won't be a sticker shock, you know, that's what we hear a lot of throughout the city. How's that going to?
I would definitely supply the developers with that, and it would be up to them to then market that to the homeowner. When they purchase the property and come into the assessing department, we would notify them as well when they file a property transfer affidavit after their purchase.
Because I just think that's just, the educational portion of this is extremely important.
Right.
We hear many times realtors just aren't advising, you know, the customers of this, so.
We've been real cognizant of notifying people when they file a property transfer affidavit, even without the exemptions, that they're going to be uncapping, and we would also notify these people when they file that they would be facing this after this time, because there's an exemption on the property.
Okay.
You know, if the market continues to increase, there could be a difference there, but they would pay taxes based on the taxable value with our millage rate at the time, the year after the exemption expires.
Okay, and then to the developer, why is it that when you drive through your complex, if someone is interested, there's no phone number, there's no email address? Now, I haven't been there in the last month, but there's nothing, you know, you see development going up, you see the beautiful homes, you see that there's going to be additional development, but there's nothing to notify the residents who are looking at your property, who to contact? And I know many of us in the city have received calls, I know the mayor's received calls, you know, how do we get ahold of someone?
So we do have, we do have a development sign on, that's kind of on Loser Road, facing Loser Road near the front of the development, that has the information for the project, also has the contact information for our sales broker as well, who's here today. We did during construction, when those four homes were, you know, being constructed and marketed, we had sale, we had signs in front of each home that were, I'll be honest, it was a bit of a challenge. We had to keep putting them back up after the contractors, or somebody would knock them down. But we did have signs in the front of each home, they have our real estate broker's contact information. She's also been hosting open houses and things like that during the construction time. So we've been actively trying to promote and put some signage up there. We do, like I said, we do have the main master development sign with our information on them. So I, I think, I'm pretty sure it was still in pretty good condition the last time I saw it, which was about a week or so ago.
So that sign is on Loser Road, so if we were to drive by it right now, there would be information as to how to contact someone?
Yes, absolutely. And as we progress with the five homes that are under construction now, as we kind of get past the initial foundations and leads and things like, you know, water and sewer leads, once the house starts, is backfilled and we start framing those, the signs for those individual homes will go up as well, too. I will say that we have been blessed that we have received a lot of communication and inquiry and requests about this project as well. We've been getting them, Dana, our real estate broker, has been doing a phenomenal job of fielding those requests and providing information as it's been coming in. And really, to answer your earlier question about whether or not we would be educating these new buyers as to the tax credits and when they expire. And she's been wonderful and instrumental in helping us, you know, get to this point. And so she will, I can guarantee you, she will be informing each and every buyer of exactly what the tax credits will entail, how long they're, you know, they're good for, when to expect that, you know, the taxes to resume back to normal. And the key thing to remember, and really, you know, optics is everything, presentation and perspective is everything, is, you know, we're trying to make sure that homeowners understand that it's not as though they are being penalized after seven years, or, you know, or however many years that the credit is approved for. It's that they're really been given the grant, and they've been given that deduction for that time, so that they understand that it's, you know, it's allowing them to establish themselves in the home early with a reduced tax rate. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that it does not come at any cost to the city. I think that the, it's a grant program, correct, that the, it's an abatement, so that the...
There's reimbursement for the school taxes, but their millage rate, the state determines it every year, and it's half the P R E average, principal residence exemption average for the state of Michigan, which is about seventeen point four-nine-five mils for 2023.
Does this program offer a graduating increase when it comes to the taxes? Because when, I'm just thinking about comments people have made that have moved into the city with reference to our taxes, you know, and depending what council approves, if we approve a six-year program. I mean, if they're going to initially pay thirty-five hundred dollars, and then it's going to go past ten thousand, I mean, that's a seven thousand dollar increase. Is there anything that is like a gradual program? Where maybe after three years, it will go up five hundred dollars? Or, I guess, something gradual versus a one lump sum? Because that, that could be a sticker shock, and, you know, we don't want a beautiful project like this, all of a sudden to have foreclosed homes because they can't afford the taxes.
The last three years of the NEZ, there's a phase-out with the millages. Goes in three-quarter, five-eighths, seven-eighths. So there is a phase-out of the NEZ on the millage rate.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
There's a phase-out of the millage rate on the NEZ. In the last three years.
So if we approve, example, a six-year program, in year four, the phase-out will start?
Correct.
Okay.
It starts five-eighths, three-quarters, and then seven-eighths, and then it goes back to the full rate.
Okay, thank you. It's good to know.
So essentially, you're adding an eighth of a, one-eighth of the taxable value each year in those last three years?
The millage rate is being stepped back up to the total.
To the full rate.
Over the last three years?
Correct.
Okay. Councilman Fraser?
Yes, I have some of the same concerns that Councilwoman Banks had. This sounds like a gentrification of Dunn-Scotus, and I know that originally it was all the houses down there, and infrastructure was put in to support the kind of buildings that were done now. Has anybody taken a look at the water and sewer to find out if it can support the new construction as it should?
Yeah, we did during the engineering and planning design phase evaluate that. And the, you know, it's important to note that these nine single-family lots were all established with, they all had existing sewer leads already run to them for the most part. So they were already considered in the water and sewer usage there along Dunn-Scotus. The single-family homes along Dunn-Scotus are very similar in character to the one, the existing homes that are across the street from them. So if you drive down Dunn-Scotus, you'll find that on the south side of the road, there's a, I would say there's like eleven or thirteen homes that are very similar in size, character, and design style to the nine that we are currently constructing. The only caveat is I don't think very many of them have a first-floor masters or, you know, no ranches, they're all two-story colonials. As you get further down into Dunn-Scotus, down along Dunn-Scotus, the, you know, the character of the homes starts to change a bit, but the character of these first nine homes is very much in keeping with what's already there at the front, you know, at the west portion of Dunn-Scotus. Now, for the thirty townhome condominium units, we are actually constructing, we had to construct all-new water main and sanitary sewer mains to service those units as part of the development.
Okay, it's, are you talking about the leads going into the condos or the townhomes? Or are you talking about the main pipe that carries everything away? Or the pipe that brings the fresh water in? See, I'm not overly concerned about whether they're ground floor.
Or not.
It's the total use, because the more, the more buildings you put on there, the more use that gets.
Yeah, so the existing nine single-family homes were within what was already established as a service area for the existing water and sewer mains along Dunn-Scotus. So those were already designed to accommodate those units, you know, these units being constructed, as single-family homes as they are proposed. The townhome condominiums behind the thirty attached units, we did do, and we are constructing, brand-new sanitary sewer main and water mains that is looped from both Loser to Dunn-Scotus. And those were evaluated for capacity and make sure that they, you know, that they service the demand in that area. That was part of the state permitting process as well.
Okay.
And the tie-in back to Loser Road, sorry to cut you off, but...
All the way back to Loser?
Yeah, all the way back to Loser, so that the existing main in Loser is suitable to accommodate the new main that was constructed within the down, within the condominiums.
Okay. One of the questions I have that sort of coincides with Councilwoman Banks, and that is the taxing. If someone purchases one of these units, do they have to stay in for a certain amount of time before they can sell it?
They do, they have to stay in for twelve years and be owner-occupied. Or sell it to somebody that will be the owner and occupant.
So if there's a six-year, and we'll just pick that number, there's a six-year tax break, but it becomes onerous for them to handle that, after the six years, they're still stuck with it for twelve years?
The property has to remain owner-occupied.
Okay. The other piece, which ties into this, and we have a similar but different kind of a concern that keeps popping into my mind. And that's on the west side of the city, there were homes built with two-acre, two-acre parcels, and the houses sat way back, they're gorgeous houses, big windows, big lawns, but they have septic tanks. And the people that purchased those homes, some of them didn't understand that septic tanks need to be maintained on a regular basis. And we're, we put sewers and water in front of those homes, but it's extremely expensive for some homeowners to tap into that. So they have a problem with the septic tank and the cost of tying into the water and the sewer. And I think, and it's only my own thoughts, I'm not accusing anything, that in the process of selling the home, I think the salesperson, the real estate salesperson, may have underplayed the fact that they're on septic tanks. Or they told the people, and people didn't understand what septic tanks were, because they may have lived in an apartment before then, didn't have to worry about that. In fact, a house that I bought, I grew up in a rural area, so I know what septic tanks are. And one of the homes that I bought, on the card that gave the description and floor space and everything else, it said S T. That's all it said, that meant septic tank. But if the real estate agent kind of forgot about saying anything about that, that's how they got themselves to a buy. In this project, I think that it's absolutely mandatory that the salesperson lets the buyer know that they're getting a break on their taxes and that that's going to run out after a while, so they can put that into their budget, start saving for it. Because a lot of times, people buy a house, and they're right at the top of the, what their budget can stand on. And then when the increase comes along, it puts them in a situation where they can't afford to stay in that house. And I don't want to see that, you don't want to see it. So it's better to tell the person all the bad news, so they can make an informed decision when they get ready to purchase a property. And that's my concern, because I don't think it's fair that they buy the property. And then, you know, five years later, whoever's sitting at this dais gets beat on that, oh, you, city council, you played a trick on us, and now I don't know what I'm going to do. So I'm making an appeal for the city council. But I'm also saying, if you do it right, the people will understand what they're facing and be in the house for the whole twelve years and beyond. So that's my, that's my point.
Yeah, transparency is important to us and the assessing department, so we would definitely notify them, like I said, when they file property transfer affidavit and the homestead exemption, P R E paperwork. And I'm sure that, you know, it's in their best interest as well to notify the property owners that this exemption was granted on these properties, that they're going to qualify for it and be receiving it, and that it will be phased out, you know, with the hopes that after, you know, if it's ten years, that they'll be in a better financial position, you know, to absorb that new tax rate, you know.
It might even be helpful for future buyers of your property to have a little seminar on how this whole thing works, so that they're very clear on... It might even be helpful for future buyers of your property to have a little seminar on how this whole thing works, so that they're very clear on what they're getting themselves into. We need the new housing, but we don't need new housing that's empty.
Yeah.
Okay?
I can, I can add to that as well, too. I mean, we, as, as Justin said, we, it is in our best interest to educate, educate and educate our, our customers really. And to kind of alleviate some of the concerns as to, you know, how well that is going to be done. I want to, I want to kind of compliment our current real estate broker, because the reason that we are here tonight before you is testament to her commitment to this community and the new home buyers, and really trying to promote this development. And, and do right by all of the home buyers, and she goes above and beyond, you know, what, what any normal Realtor may or may not do. And we're very certainly, certainly very appreciative of her efforts. And like I said, we would not be standing here with this application request if it wasn't for her proactiveness and, you know, her foresight and, and care to see this succeed and really become as best as it's going to be. So I, I can promise you, by the time this process is complete, she will have a master's degree in Nez applications and will be holding, you know, holding lecture for, for all the new home buyers as she's, she's conducting her, her sales with new clients and educating them thoroughly on exactly what they're getting into, what the benefits are that, that we've established here, you know, with the city council, and how that's going to impact that home buyer.
Very good.
Because we, we care about that.
Yeah, just make sure you put a ankle bracelet on her so she can't leave. Okay.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it.
Right, Councilman Brightwell?
I definitely support abatements, and because I see them, I see them as, as a, as a marketing tool for, for various cities in different ways. And from, in all the salient, a lot of the salient questions have been answered and are asked. But from a professional standpoint, what is the most optimum abatement period? You know, from your, from your, what, what have you seen that works in, in your industry?
You know, I think probably ten years would be good for this. It gives the homeowner time to, you know, increase their marketability and their, their household income, you know?
Okay, all right. Given that. Are there any, are there any, you know, are there any point of sale regulations and all laws that keep us from exposing these loopholes, not loopholes, but got you kind of things in, in, in the sales agreement? Because that, I've, I've heard it from both sides, like, you know, with, with septic, septic tanks, a lot of individuals didn't know it, but it's right there on the.
It's in the disclosure.
Document, and there's, there are things that respect to taxes, they're right there on the HUD document, but obviously it doesn't tell you what potential would come down. So are there any point of sale laws in the state of Michigan that keep those, those revelations from being presented?
Not that I know of, but we always stress to homeowners to read their closing packets and look through all those disclosures. It's ultimately their responsibility to do the due diligence to find those, but it's disclosed a lot of the things that they miss or didn't understand before they bought the house.
Okay, all right. Now, and, and that's like I said, I, I know marketing and point, I mean, abatements are, is a mar, a marketing tool.
You know, we, we have to be transparent and all this is public information, so it's readily and easily available to the public.
All right.
They can look at the properties, come to the office and look at B S A, our assessing software, to look up what properties have abatements, they can call us, they can ask us. All these documents are available on our website or through the state of Michigan's website, so.
Okay, one final question. I heard you mention it, but it's always, how many, how much of this will be geared toward empty nesters, you know, people who are, who are currently retired, you know, you know, downsizing?
So a, a very good portion of it, actually. A hundred percent of the single family homes are kind of geared towards empty nesters. Of the four units that we constructed, two of them were ranches, two were colonial, but with a first floor master as well, so that, you know. That kind of gears towards not quite your empty nesters. I still got a few of them here at home that are, that haven't quite left the house, but, you know, I, for whatever reason, that you going up and downstairs is not something we want to tackle anymore. And of the, the five additional single family homes that we have there, three of those are ranch units and, and the other two are, again, the first floor masters. So, you know, a hundred percent of those are pretty much geared towards that, you know, constituency. And then within the town homes of the third, like I said, of the thirty units there, only four of them do not have a first floor. So the other twenty-six are all kind of geared towards that, that population.
Okay, thank you, and I definitely appreciate this project.
Thank you, Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes, thank you. Most of the questions and concerns I have have already been asked and answered, so thank you very much. I am in favor of this. I just had a question about the existing retain, retaining, retention pond that's in the back next to the condos, that's in, you know, the neighboring, will that stay, or is that going to be pumped out, or?
That is going to be pumped out. There's a pump station, proposed pump station that's in there. We are currently awaiting three phase power from D T E for that, because unfortunately the pump station requires three phase, which is a little more intensive than the single phase power that's readily available or within the neighborhoods. You know, most of the, the homes will only have single phase power, so D T E is having to bring that overhead from quite a ways. So there, we're on the list awaiting that power, so that way we can, you know, finish the install of that pump station. Because without, without power, given high groundwater table, if we install it without the power, then that thing will just eventually be popped out of the ground because of hydrostatic pressure. So it, it is coming, it will be pumped, it will not be a retention pond, it will not hold water, it will be a detention pond. All that water will be drained, and the pond will be dry after each, you know, rainfall event, within, I think, twenty-four hours of each rainfall event.
Okay, thank you, and I'm glad to hear the educational piece as well, because we've all heard, and that's been a huge concern. Also, if everything goes well, when do you expect to, I mean, what's your development process? How many?
Yeah, so we have, like I said, we've construct, we started construction on the next four single family homes along Dun Scottus. We hope to have those completed by, you know, this time next year and occupied by this time next year for those four homes. The town homes, we are wrapping up this fall, the, the underground utility work, and then the road paving, our goal is to have the road paved before winter sets in, so that we have a paved road, and then at which point we'll be starting to build those town home buildings as well, starting, most likely starting from Loser and working our way down. We are retaining the lot nine on the single family homes, we're setting that aside right now because we feel we need an additional, you know, in case we need additional construction access. So that one will probably be one of the last homes that we construct. As we make, make our way down the town homes, I would say by, over the course of the next two years, we'll hope to complete the entire project and have everything fully occupied.
Okay.
It's our goal.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I just would like to confirm, this is not a HUD project, these homes?
They are not.
No, okay, thank you. Just want a clarification on that. Also, the town homes, they are condos, or are they going to be rentals?
They are going to be owner occupied condominiums, so they will not be rentals.
Thank you.
They would, rentals would not qualify this, for this program, so that's, yeah.
And then, I'm not sure if you know this, or if our assessor knows this, is, is this similar to what Polte developers do? They have kind of like a graduating program for their customers, and I was just wondering if they're in a similar program like this, or is it their own special program?
It's, it's their own special program.
But is it similar to something like this? Do you know?
I'm unfamiliar with the program, I'll do some research into it, and I can address that at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
But Polte, you know, while they have it, they're a tax exempt company, so while they own the property, they don't pay taxes on the properties.
Wait, say that again, please?
They are a tax exempt organization, so while they own the properties, they don't pay taxes on them until they sell them. Polte.
Yeah, but the, the homeowner is taxed, and I know they have a.
Right, but depending on when they transfer that property to the homeowner, they can go the first year without paying taxes to the homeowner.
Okay, all right, and I know there's another company out there, too. I don't, I think, I think there's a big developer in Brighton, and they're doing something also similar with a.
What, what's the program, you know the program's name that you're?
No, I don't. I just know several people that are in Polte Homes, and they say it's an amazing graduating program, you know. They start in at one price and then, you know, over several years, they reach whatever the top is.
Are you talking about the cost of the, the house, or the, the taxes? Because this is a tax, this is a tax.
I'm assuming it was taxes, not the cost of the house, but I'm, I'm not sure, that's, but if you don't know, it's okay.
Yeah, they're, they're either, you know, taxable or exempt in some form.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe they only sell the house one room at a time.
I don't know, they just, no, they have a really successful project.
I did have a, a, one, one more question, and then the mayor now has another question, but you mentioned they cannot be rentals. So what would happen if someone buys it and then rents it out?
The abatement would be denied for that person, they can't rent it.
So instead of having it denied, would the taxes just go back to what they should be?
That's correct.
And that's only if they register with the city, of course?
Right.
Okay.
And we do audits of the P R Es to make sure that, you know, the mailing address is correct. The state of Michigan does audits on the P R Es, so. When they file an income tax return, if they're not filing out of that address, the state eventually catches up with that, we get a list of everybody that needs to be denied. So you kind of have the three branches, state, county, city, doing audits on the principal residence exemption.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Do you have any idea what the homeowner's fee is going to be, the condo fee?
The association fee, I don't think we have that established yet.
But it's going to be a couple hundred dollars a month.
Yes, it will be probably.
So that's my point, this is another reason. Paying a mortgage today with interest rates being what they are, and then the taxes and the homeowner, because they're going to pay condo fee. So that's why this is, you know, strengthens the argument for approving this. We worked with our Senator Moss, state senator, and got, we couldn't use this tool a number of years ago. When I first became mayor, I was very interested in this, but the cap was too low, so the cap has been raised. And obviously, price of construction and everything else has gone up, so. Again, I, I congratulate you on coming up with this formula. We want to see the project built.
So this will come back to us on Tuesday, October tenth, to schedule a meeting on November seventeenth, November thirteenth. My, that's what the write-up says. So my question to the clerk is, our meeting on the tenth is at Lawrence Tech, is that correct? Is there any problem if we schedule the public hearing now? Do we have to wait until the, the tenth? If council's in favor of move, putting this on a public hearing?
We don't, I was originally going to have it scheduled, but I wanted to bring it first for discussion.
Would, would council?
The question to me is, no, you can schedule a public hearing whenever you wish to.
Okay, do you have any objection if we were to schedule it now?
I, I don't.
Council, are you, if, if we're in favor, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, okay, I already have that ready, so I'll change the date.
What date are you propose, what, what, I'm sorry?
They want to do a public hearing for this on Monday, November thirteenth.
November, I thought you said October.
The, in the write-up, they're asking for us to approve or to schedule the public hearing in November, on October tenth. October tenth is our meeting at Lawrence Tech. So in order to keep that agenda as clean as possible, if there's no objections, I would entertain a motion to schedule that public hearing for November thirteenth tonight. Does that make sense?
All right, do you, do you need a motion?
I do.
Okay, my move that we schedule a public hearing for.
The establishment.
Right here, the establishment of the neighborhood enterprise zone for Loser Road, Dun Scottus, Street Development Neighborhood Enterprise Zone for Monday, November thirteenth.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to schedule a public hearing on Monday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, for the establishment of a neighborhood enterprise zone, P A one forty-seven of one, of nineteen ninety-two, as amended for the Loser Road Dun Scottus Street Development Neighborhood Enterprise Zone District Number One. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we are up to the council portion. I will turn it over to Councilwoman Hoag.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to announce that on last Thursday, the fourteenth, I attended the Suicide Prevention Community Forum in Farmington Hills at the Hawk Community Center. That was sponsored by our chief, in conjunction with our chief, the chief of Farmington Hills, as well as P G. And it was a great forum. I'd like to just share that over half the audience that came and spoke, they gave accolades to our police department. And it was just amazing, very touching event that really shows that people are suffering out here, but it was just great to hear that the Southfield Police Department, every single person that spoke that needed help indicated that they needed to come to give thanks to the Southfield Police Department, and they even went as far as to say they probably wouldn't have made it through if it wasn't for how they were treated by the Southfield Police Department. So I just wanted to give accolades again to our police department, the chief, and just to tell them thank you for the service that they're doing. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
I also would just echo what Councilwoman Hoag mentioned about our police department. We, we have excellent public services here in the city of Southfield. And tonight, I will skip over my normal praise of our veterans, but just this past weekend, I was sort of campaigning. But I ran across a, a resident who, who, who I have assisted in the past, and she asked me about a senior citizen center. And I, obviously, I told I would look into this and also bring it up for discussion and for, at a later date for council. And since we are going through a major renovation of all our facilities, which is a hundred and sixty-five million dollar investment in the city of Southfield and our buildings and. and our buildings and, um, infra, and not necessarily infrastructure, but primarily the buildings. So the, I want to address the fact of our seniors. And this resident who happened to be a senior, she, uh, she had done her homework. She happened to know the aging of our population and the, uh, extent of what is being offered now to our senior citizens. And so I would just, uh, in the appropriate forum, I will pretty much kind of champion the creation of a senior citi- citizen center uh, for the city of Southfield on a, on a, so, thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you. Councilwoman Taylor?
Thank you, no, I have nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Alright, Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to remind everyone that on October first, the city of Southfield will hold a walk to raise awareness of domestic violence. Um, I believe the walk is, um, one point five, um, maybe it's a two mile walk. If you've never, um, been at this event before, it's very, um, touching. And the police department does a great job, um, I believe along with Hagan and the city of Southfield in organizing this event. So, um, if you can remember to come out October first, from eleven to two, and, um, walk for those, um, that have been victims of domestic violence. It would be great, thank you.
Councilwoman Frazier?
Uh, I have nothing to say, thank you.
Okay, so two announcements. One is this Wednesday, September twentieth, from four thirty to six thirty, the Southfield Public Library is partnering with Vincent's Pharmacy for flu vaccinations. They will be available for anyone ages three and up, no appointment is required, just drop by. And of course, it is while supplies last. There will also be a limited amount of shingles, pneumonia and tetanus shots available. Um, they do ask that you bring your insurance card, because a lot of times it is free, but it is a, uh, no appointment required. You can come by and get all your flu shots done at the library, again, this Wednesday, from four thirty to six thirty. Also, um, this past Friday, I was in the Kroger at Twelve Mile and Evergreen with my children, we were buying food for the weekend. And a nice Southfield resident came up, his name is Mark, and commented that, you know, he appreciates everything that the council is doing, and so, um, it's always nice when we get those comments. So, Mark, thank you very much, uh, it made my weekend, and I do appreciate the, uh, the kind words. So with that, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I wanna mention that, uh, prior to tonight's meeting, um, I represented the city at, um, Catalpa Oaks Park, where, uh, the pavilion, um, was named in honor of, uh, the late Vincent Gregory, who was sheriff, um, county commissioner, state representative, state senor, senator. Um, also, this week is our continuing project with, or partnership, rather, with Habitat for Humanity, Oakland County. We will be doing Rock the Block this week on, uh, Thursday, the twenty-first, and, um, on Friday, the twenty-second. Again, this program helps a number of our, um, seniors with home repairs, yard maintenance, and, uh, we're very grateful. I think this is our eighth year of, uh, Rock the Block. So, uh, we thank, uh, the volunteers that come out and partner with Habitat for Humanity uh, to do the, um, the work for home repairs and yard maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you, we have nothing from administration. Madam Attorney?
I have no, nothing to add, thank you.
Alright, Madam Clerk?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, anything from the building department? Okay, we have nothing else. Uh, counsel, we will take a five-minute recess and then, um, adjourn back into the council study. Thank you.